He's always got to bring up. You have to understand the amount of information he brings just in case somebody has a question. He brings things that you never know.
Good evening. I'd like to call the regular Borough Council meeting of December 12th, 2022 to order. This meeting has been properly advertised in the Home News Tribune of January 7th, 2022, according to Public Law 1975, Chapter 231. May I have a roll call, please?
Council President Zambrana?
Here.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Here.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Here.
Councilwoman Peretti?
Here.
Councilwoman Potter?
Here.
Councilwoman Ravelinski?
Here.
All present?
Thank you. Please stand and join me in a moment of silence, followed by a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so now we have the approval of the minutes from the November 28th, 2022 meeting. May I have a motion and a second?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that these minutes get approved as typed?
Second. Any comments or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have comments from the audience on consent resolutions 2060, 2022 through 2069, 2022. If any member of the public wishes to speak on any of the resolutions, please step to the microphone, identify yourself to the clerk, and say your name and address for the record. These comments are limited to resolutions listed on the consent agenda. Seeing none, I will close audience comments and move on to the bill list. Will the clerk please read by title only Bill List Resolution 260, 2022?
Resolution 260, 2022 is authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in the total amount of $2,480,208.58.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Would the resolution be adopted?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Peretti, second by Councilwoman Ravelinski. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Potter?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Ravelinski?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, now we have the introduction of resolutions. When voting on resolutions, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and having been reviewed by the Borough Council will be enacted by one motion. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Do you have any requests to pull? I do. Would you please pull 269, 2022?
I just have two questions, quick questions, about 264 and 265. So for 264, the employee handbook, it says it was revised December 2022. Do we have any idea when's the last time it was revised?
It never existed, so this is the first time.
Okay. And the purchasing procedures manual?
Same thing.
Thank you.
By the way, I didn't want to pull that one from the vote. I just wanted to have to share with the audience. Anybody else? Okay, sorry, let me go to the next page. There being no additional request to pull any resolutions, will the clerk please read the consent resolution?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish the consent agenda for any regular or special meeting, and whereas the Borough Clerk has posted a consent agenda for this meeting, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey that the consent agenda previously prepared by the Borough Clerk be approved without the necessity of having the individual resolutions read by the Borough Clerk.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that these resolutions be adopted?
Second. I have a motion by Councilwoman Potter, second by Councilwoman O'Donnell. Any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Otter?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Ravelinski?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So I asked for 269 to be pulled. You all voted on it, but we wanted to take, since this is the last meeting of the year, take some time to honor one of our departing council members. So if you'll bear with me, I'm going to read the honorarium resolution for Anna Newbauer. Whereas the Borough of Milltown mayor and council would like to recognize Anna Newbauer for her years of service to her community, and whereas Anna Newbauer is a graduate of Spotswood High School, received her BA from Rutgers, and is currently working on a master's in human resources. Anna grew up in Milltown and currently lives in the borough with her husband Joe. And whereas Anna was elected by the voters of Milltown on November 5th, 2019, to serve Milltown for a three-year term on Borough Council from 2020 through 2022. Whereas during her tenure, Anna devoted innumerable hours as a member to the following boards and committees. She was liaison to the Green Team, Cable TV, Milltown Rescue Squad, DPW, Gen Shade Tree Committee, Board of Health, and on the subcommittees of Parks and Recreation, Public Safety, Public Works and Recycling, Environmental Health and Social Services, and Utilities. Whereas Anna Newbauer continually sought to improve the quality of life for all Borough residents and demonstrated foresight and leadership in policy decisions and operations of Borough Government. Now therefore, I, Trina Mayer, Mayor of the Borough of Milltown, together with the entire Borough Council, do hereby honor Anna and thank her for all her hard work and service, and urge all our residents to join me in our heartfelt thanks. I witness thereof, I have set my hand and cause official seal of the Borough of Milltown to be affixed this 12th day of December, 2022. So Anna, thank you for acting. I guess we could take pictures later. You could take pictures of your family, or if you want to do it now, you can. That's why Mom passed the gun. Oh, so take pictures now.
No, you can take a picture with Mom.
Yeah, please. We're happy to have you here, so let's take any picture.
Anna, where's your phone?
Oh. Do you want to take one of yours?
Yeah, I'll send one to you.
I think a job proposal.
You want to wave it over to the mayor? Put it down. That make sense?
Sure. I'm actually a little taller than people.
You should go lefty, okay? Smile, say "one more." Do that again. And we can look like a team. Ain't that a good, ma'am? You.
Thank you. So Anna and I ran together in 2019. We'll be sorry to see her go. She has been an integral part, especially of the public works department. She was the committee chair in the last few years, and you know, we're really proud of, along with the Finance Committee, what the DPW has done to do road paving and continue all of the services throughout COVID. So Anna, thank you for all your efforts on that, and as well as everything else.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
And Mayor?
Yes.
As you continue, will you please call your reports from your copy of your agenda?
Yes.
I had it in the wrong order, so if you could.
Mimi got into the eggnog a little early.
Start no wonder.
So we'll start the reports with the Department of Public Safety with Councilman Dave Pot.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. From the Milltown Police Department, between November 3rd, 2022 and December 5th, 2022, police have responded to 940 calls for service. During this period, police conducted 91 radar details in numerous locations. Police made 111 motor vehicle stops during this period. Three arrests were made, which included shoplifting and possession of heroin and opioids. Police responded to 14 motor vehicle accidents, which included minor injuries. Residents are reminded to continue to drive safely and use extra caution as utility and roadwork continue throughout the town. We appreciate your cooperation and patience during these projects. We would like to congratulate Sergeant Louis Maldonado on his December 31st retirement, and thank him for his 25 years of service in police service. Sergeant Maldonado, please enjoy your well-deserved retirement. With the retirement of Sergeant Maldonado, we also congratulate and welcome our new entry-level police officers, Nick Espinosa and Thomas Martiella. Both candidates are Milltown residents and will begin six months of training on January 25th at the Cape May Police Academy. We look forward to the introduction and swearing-in of our new officers upon successful completion of the academy training. We wish everyone happy, healthy, and safe holidays. Chief Brian Caneli.
Madam Mayor, my second report is from the Milltown Rescue Squad. For November 2022, there were a total of 101 calls, 59 of them were in Milltown, 23 were in the Jersey Turnpike, and 19 mutual aid. The squad will be escorting Santa around town this Saturday at 6:00 PM alongside the Milltown Fire Department. Listen for sirens as he gets ready to slay down your street. As flu season is here again, please make sure that you are taking the proper steps to prevent yourself from getting sick. Wash your hands frequently, avoid touching your face, cover your mouth when you cough, and stay home if you don't feel well. Allow at least 24 hours after your fever goes away to return to normal activities. Consult your doctor if you develop any flu-like symptoms. The sooner you seek help, the sooner you can get treated and get better. Many local urgent cares and pharmacies are still providing testing for flu and COVID viruses. Call 911 if you experience shortness of breath, chest pains, or are unable to walk due to weakness and/or confusion. If you or somebody in your household is experiencing a flu or COVID-like illness, please make sure you tell 911 about their symptoms when calling for help. Also, please wear a mask for when first responders come to your home. Anyone interested in learning about joining the Rescue Squad or becoming an EMT should email recruitment@milltownrescuesquad.org to learn more. We're happy to answer any questions. From everyone at the Milltown Rescue Squad, have a happy, healthy, and safe holiday season. And Madam Mayor, my third report is from the Milltown Fire Department. Drills, two; meetings, one; fire calls, 12; special assignments, one; work details, four, with a total incidents of 20. The department applied for and was awarded $27,000 for new turnout gear from the state of New Jersey. This will get us five sets of boots, helmets, coats, and pants. The budget for 2023 was prepared and submitted to the BA's office. Included in the packet was the budget itself and updated long-range bucket, a budget and request for capital funds to purchase a new fire engine. Nominations were held at the department meeting. The three in line officers remain the same. Tom Demanski is captain, Chris Corrigan is first lieutenant, and Brian Sudo is second lieutenant. The fire board had four members nominated for assistant chief, Brian Kozak, Tony Corbenic, Steve Bailey, and Scott Jansen. Steve Bailey's name was withdrawn due to an issue with certification. The election will be held at the December meeting on December 20th. Anthony Fama was nominated to move up to deputy chief, and Ray Jolly was nominated to move up to chief of the department. One application was handed out to a prospective member. Regarding training, rapid intervention training was done at Hose Company. Members had their masks covered with a cling wrap to simulate smoke. A hose line was followed to simulate a down firefighter to rescue them with an extra self-contained breathing apparatus to provide breathing air. Two members were signed up for the class at Middlesex County Fire Academy, Brian Kozak for incident command, level 400, and Tom Demanski for incident command, level 200. Scott Jansen completed his course for fire officer, too. Regarding vehicle maintenance, due to the budget being closed, all vehicle maintenance is being deferred to New Year's unless emergency repairs are needed. A new master intake valve was installed on engine 63. Regarding equipment, hose that was ordered a few months ago is being delivered, two 1/3-inch hoses, two 3-gate valves, and 6-inch floating dock strainer arrived. Regarding buildings and grounds, bay floors were scrubbed and cleaned, reeds were hung, and the building was lit for the holiday season. Members are needed. Candidates interested in joining the Milltown Fire Department are encouraged to stop by the firehouse Monday nights at 6:30 or email joinmilltownfire@gmail.com. Respectfully submitted, Stephen Battaglia, Chief of the Department. And Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, Chief Battaglia is here in the audience this evening. Chief, may I ask you to step up to the podium, please? So Madam Mayor and Council, as there will be a changing of chiefs on January 1st, and this being Chief Battaglia's final report, I just wanted to say thank you to Chief's dedication, work ethic, and leadership, which is second to none. And Chief, it's been truly an honor and pleasure working with you. We know you're not going anywhere, and you'll still be heavily involved in the department, but on behalf of the mayor and council, we just want to say thank you for your years of service in leading the Milltown Fire Department.
I know you'd like to say a couple words.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Dave. Mayor and council, good evening. I just want to, I just need five minutes. I figured it was a good way to wrap up my term as chief and just kind of throw some things out there. The Milltown Fire Department, as you know, is a volunteer organization. You know, we have, all of our members work full-time or some are retired. It's unique to leave your job and go on a fire call. And thankfully, there are a few of us around that can do that and that do, you know, services town in that way, but it's definitely a challenge. The average age of Milltown firemen is 44. George Geis throws that average up a little bit, we know, but, you know, the average age being 44, most of us are not getting any younger. The average time served is 20 years, so there's definitely a lot of experience with the department. We do have some challenges, as you know, and it's nothing that you guys don't face either. Limited budgets, older apparatus. We did put in, as you read, for a new one. The average age of one of our fire engines is 22 years old. In 2022, between calls, drills, equipment checks, drivers' checks, we had over 300 incidents with 5,000 man-hours. And when you see a fire truck rolling down a road, it's, there's a lot that goes on behind it. There's all the preparation. The guys are right now, they're checking saws, checking, you know, the equipment. It's not just answering fire calls. It's a 24-hour dedication, and I appreciate our guys for doing that. We currently have 34 members, and we're going to be losing a few due to them moving out of the area or moving on in life. It's a nationwide issue, not just Milltown, not just in the county, state, or, it's a nationwide issue that the volunteer fire service is starting to shrink rapidly, and, you know, we do have to look for ways to maintain our membership. We do have, you know, as you read, three guys that are running for assistant chief. I wish them the best of luck. The election will be on next Tuesday, and we will see what happens with that. But we do have a roadmap for the future. We've had enhanced partnerships with the police department, the Rescue Squad. I think we are, you know, at an all-time good standing with those departments. The Rescue Squad we're working with, we have members trained in extrication, and we're looking for the future to address some of the problems with Milltown with flooding and high water issues. We, you know, are going to start a junior program to hopefully bolster our membership with some of the younger kids in town. We're looking maybe to the borough to consider hiring practices and hiring people that are certified in the emergency services. We did just, were awarded grants for $27,000, and we're looking to apply for more grants. And of course, we want, you know, to continue to invest in the equipment that we have to avoid major breakdowns. We, you know, we're looking for systematic incentives to be established to encourage people to volunteer. It's not easy. A lot of our guys work a job, two jobs, three jobs, and that's their fourth job. It's daunting. Finally, I want to thank the mayor and council for all of your support. For a number of years, we know in Milltown politics, you know, things were favorable with the fire department, and then they kind of fell out of favor. And we've worked really hard, this current council and the fire board, firemen, we've worked really hard, and I think we are at a new understanding, a great relationship, and I appreciate that because it wasn't easy for a couple of years, and we were able to talk, work things out, and I feel like now we're on, you know, we're on excellent ground to get things done for the future, and I really do sincerely appreciate that. I want to thank all of the members that I have, you know, that are there to support me, the borough workers, whether it be finance, the Borough Clerk's office, DPW. When you go up to a major gas leak and Don Herman comes walking over and he says, "Chief, whatever you need, I'm here for you." It's really appreciated. It's really like, it goes a long way, and I really do appreciate that. Ray and Anthony will be moving up, as you know. Ray will be an excellent chief, and he can fix your heater and air conditioning, which is better than I can. Finally, I want to thank my family. My wife is here to support me. There's days when I'm cranky, I'm grumpy, or the pager goes off at 3:00 in the morning, and she's up as much as I am. And finally, in the holiday season, just want to say thank you for everything. God bless Milltown, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
That concludes your report. And I will just say that it's hard to believe that two years went really quickly. I remember being there on New Year's Day swearing you in, and it's not often that you get to see somebody's work in progress when you're the mayor, but twice in the last two years, there have been fires on my street, one right next door that was pretty major, and to see the chief there just exhibit calm professionalism, it was really heartening to know that the Milltown Fire Department was in such good hands, and so, Chief, you will be missed. We wish you all the best, and we look forward to this January 1st swearing in Ray and Anthony. But thank you for all of your service to the borough. You've done a great job, and just you're an all-around nice guy to deal with. Much appreciated. All right, so moving on, we have the Department of Utilities, Councilman James Peretti.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No utility reports for this evening, just one short committee report from the Human Relations Committee. The HRC has begun planning out our 2023 calendar, which will include a collaborative art initiative. Our goal would be to create more livable, sustainable, and exciting environments through art. The HRC is still quite in the infancy stages of planning, but as we close out 2022 and begin work next year, we hope to facilitate artistic conversation to lead to innovative new ideas, connect creatives of all kinds with individuals and organizations that work directly with our community in all areas of civic life, and create a new work that is reflective of those conversations and relationships that can challenge perception and inspire action. and inspire action. The HRC has only just started some of the initial outlines, as mentioned before, and for the project that can be accomplished, but we are most definitely looking forward to be working with multiple interested committees throughout town who have already expressed interest, and will eventually be creating a presentation for the Borough Council later in 2023. Until then, the committee wishes everyone a safe and a happy holiday season, and we look forward to continuing our work next year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we have the Department of Public Works and Recycling Councilwoman Anna Newbell.
Thank you. I only have a report from the DPW tonight. This is for Monday for today. I don't know why, I'm reading off my phone, so it's a little different. The tree lighting was a huge success, and Pardon Joffrey Herbert and Borough Parks have had the leaves removed. All snow equipment has gone over and has been gone over and plows ready for the upcoming season. The salt bin has been topped off, and pothole repair is ongoing. Sign repair is ongoing with signage being installed at Michelin Park. A tree on chestnut was removed, and the department is hoping to continue removals as manpower and weather permits. The upcoming holiday changes are, and this is for garbage collection. Garbage collection on Monday, December 26th will now occur on Tuesday, December 27th, and garbage collection that was on Monday, January 2nd will now be on Tuesday, January 3rd. The DPW would like to wish all residents a happy and healthy holiday season, and to please check Channel 15 or milltownnj.org for DPW updates. And that's all I have left to report.
Great. Thank you very much. Next, we have the Department of Recreation Councilwoman Margaret O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mayor Mayor. I did this last year, so I hope everybody will indulge me. I just did kind of a year-end review for each of my committees, so I'll start with the library board. In early 2022, the Milltown Library saw the retirement of both Director Bonnie and Children's Librarian Miss Susan. After several months of very able interim leadership by Debbie Miller, who's here in the audience tonight, Charlie, that can be joined, joined the staff as director, followed by Miss Sam as the youth services librarian. Circulation is up. The only statistic that has gone down is curbside pickup, which is attributed to more people actually coming inside the library. There are many changes that you haven't seen to things such as policies and procedures, but there are many things the library hopes you have noticed. Many new programs for patrons of all ages, culling of the collection to make room for new acquisitions, and changes to the physical space as well. The Friends of the Library continue to underwrite the costs of many new programs and activities, making them free or low cost to library patrons. Many of the Friends' pre-COVID events, activities, and offerings have returned. Fundraisers, book sales, calendars, museum passes, et cetera. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the beautiful gardens that surround the library. There's year-round interest for humans, birds, and other pollinators, and they are lovingly cared for by volunteers who weed and water and plant and prune to keep it that way. In 2023, the library will go find-free for overdue books. We're also much closer to a new roof for the library, with the borough having allocated half of the estimated funds needed in the 2022 budget and hopefully the other half in the 2023 budget. It was my sincere pleasure working with the library board, the staff, and friends this year. The next library board meeting and the final one for 2022 will be tomorrow, Tuesday, December 13th, at 6:30 PM at the library, and all are welcome. In terms of the Recreation Advisory Committee, recreation started 2022 without a department head, but a new hire was made before the end of the first quarter. Many thanks to Kim McGrath for single-handedly keeping things going until Ron Cephalon joined the staff as director of recreation. He came at a time of great changes. After many years of service, we were ending our SAC program so that the school system could start their own academic after-school care. There were many UPS, new and successful sports programs, camps, arts, and interest programs for kids, and reinvigorated programs for adults. There were productive partnerships with the senior center and the library. Thanks to the finance committee for planning and allocating for them, recreation was able to make a number of significant park and pool improvements this year with more planned already for next year. One big downer, though, was having to temporarily close Michelin Field to address a safety issue there. Happy to say that a solution was found and implemented on a timely basis. In 2023, recreation will hit the ground running with great programming, already accepting registrations now, continued improvements to the parks, pool, and pool grounds, and even more offerings for our residents to enjoy. The REC Advisory Committee is looking for new members to share the resident perspective on existing programs and facilities, and help focus energy on activities that would resonate most with fellow residents. There is still time to join the committee to shape what recreation does in 2023. I thoroughly enjoyed serving as the liaison to both the department and the advisory committee. And I didn't write this down, but I should thank my fellow committee members, James and Rich. The next meeting, the last of 2022, will take place on Wednesday, December 21st, at 7:00 PM in the Borough Conference Room. And lastly, the Historic Preservation Committee is an enthusiastic and dedicated group of residents who endeavor to save the borough's historically significant architecture and culture. They're doing so from both a practical and sentimental perspective. In 2022, the committee members focused on getting a historic preservation element in the borough master plan, changing committee status to commission status, learning the ownership of the railroad trestle for its preservation, and alongside the Milltown Historical Society, moving the Raritan River Railroad Station building from private property onto public property. Ending in 2022 and going into 2023, this committee will be putting together a proposal for the council to consider adopting what's been described as a weak commission, meaning one that advises and guides residents on techniques and materials rather than prohibiting them from doing what owners want or need to do to maintain or improve their property. Serving as liaison to this committee in 2022 has been a wonderful and enlightening experience. The last meeting of the year will be Thursday, December 29th, at 6:30 via Zoom. Please note that for 2023, this committee will meet on Thursdays, Fourth Thursdays, I should say, at 7:30 via Zoom. This changes the start time from previous years, and the public is also welcome at all of these meetings as well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next, we have the Department of Environmental Health and Social Services, Rich Revolinski, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Short report tonight, revitalization committee will meet tomorrow, December 13th, and the environmental commission on Wednesday, December 14th. Nothing else to report at this time?
Thank you. Next, the Department of Finance Administration and Planning Council President Phil Zambrano.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Don't have any finance report for tonight. Our Fort Avenue Redevelopment Agency meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday, the 20th, when the results of that report or the results of that meeting actually are available, we'll share that with everyone on the council and in the town. And then, of course, I have a short senior center report, which has been submitted by Debbie Cuddy. As always, the following activities continue to take place weekly at the Milltown Senior Center. These all include aerobics, line dancing, yoga, Tai Chi, billiards, walk aerobics, men's club, core, Spanish arts and crafts bingo, and the monthly visit from the VNA nurse. The following is also a list of senior center activities. Last week, on December 5th, the senior center had a holiday card and decoration workshop sponsored by Millsix County. This was a fun and creative way to make beautiful cards and ornaments for a variety of holiday celebrations. Also, last week, on the 7th, there was a 30-minute guided meditation presentation by Park Physical Therapy. This is a great way to learn and implement relaxation techniques and possibly incorporate them into everyday busy routines, especially in the holiday season. Upcoming bus trips are scheduled this coming Tuesday, actually tomorrow, to Menlo Park Mall, and on Brunswick Square Mall on Tuesday of next week to help with any holiday gift shopping. There's also a bus trip scheduled for food shopping on Tuesday, December 21st, leaving the senior center at 11:30, and on Thursday, December 29th, to Trader Joe's, leaving the senior center at 10:00 AM. There will also be a bus trip to the Olive Garden on December 28th, leaving the senior center at 11:30. As I mentioned in last meeting, there is a Toys for Tots box that is located at the senior center, will be there through the holidays. There are two boxes outside Borough Hall right here. There are also collections for toy for tops. Debbie and the seniors wanted to say a special thank you to the Tai Chi and yoga instructor who will be moving from Milltown, and of course, because of that, will no longer be teaching at the senior center. It was a pleasure working with her, and should be missed by her students and members. Debbie also want to give a special thank you to student intern Melissa for all her hard work. She's leaving at the end of December, graduating from Rider University, and we wish her all the best in all future endeavors. Just a reminder that the senior center will be closing at 12:00 PM on Friday, December 23rd, and Friday, December 30th. As a reminder, seniors do not have to join the Milltown Senior Center or attend activities at the senior center to arrange a doctor's appointment or other trips such as for food and shopping. Wishing everyone a happy holiday and healthy holiday season. And as always, if you'd like to attend any programs at the senior center, you can call Debbie at 732-296-0681, or send Debbie an email at Dcuddy@Milltownborough.com. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Great, thank you. And we, Council President Zambrano and the Borough Administrator, got to go to lunch with the seniors last week for their holiday lunch. There were 50 people there. It was really nice. It was great to see everyone, and they were, you know, very appreciative of all the things that the borough has done for them over the last year or so. They were very excited to have the bus trips and the new bus driver, and it just goes along with many of the other new programs that everybody's been talking about, so it was a very, very fun time. Speaking of our administrator, Jeanette, anything to report tonight?
I do just one small item, so I want to say, first of all, thank you to the mayor and council for allowing us to have a holiday celebration for our employees, which will be this Thursday. We're going to be doing that at the senior center, so the senior center will also be closing at noon this Thursday to the general public, and the borough offices will be closing at 1:00, so that the employees can celebrate the holidays and we can appreciate all their hard work throughout the year.
Great, thank you. Looking forward to it. And thank you, by the way, for getting the employee handbook and the purchasing done. I'm sure that was a lot of work, and it's hard to believe that there was, we never had one, but I'm happy that we're moving ahead and getting all that in place. Thank you. Next, we have our engineer report, Mr. McCollum.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a short report tonight. First, we're pleased to advise the mayor and council that the borough received a grant amount of $619,460 towards improvements to North Park Drive. It's anticipated this project may need to be performed in phases since the estimated cost exceeds the usual grant amount. $600,000 is much more than usually what's received, so we're happy to see that. Second item is Clayton Core improvements. You know, you awarded the contract to Blackrock. We're working on construction contracts, and we hope to see construction begin as soon as the weather permits. And lastly, as previously promised, the plans were submitted for the force main replacement, the MCA last week for their review. That's all we have.
Thank you. So when weather permits, is that usually the spring?
Probably springtime, but there's some work, some drainage work can be done sometimes in the wintertime, and want to minimize impact to the residents, especially during snow period.
Right, right.
We'll try and see what we can do to start it.
Good. Anybody else, any questions? All right. Our Borough Attorney, Mr. Vignone.
No report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Back to the mayor. So I was going to mention the, all the parties. So we had the senior party, we had the employee party, which we're looking forward to. I was fortunate to go to the Milltown Historic Society, had a lovely concert on Saturday, and Santa was there, and, you know, you look around town, it's very festive, even here in Borough Hall, so I, of course, I want to start by wishing you all a happy and healthy holiday season with your friends and family. You know, we do have, we're lucky in Milltown, we have a lot of nice traditions, and I'm glad that the chief is here because the fire department is a part of a lot of those. You know, when we had the tree lighting, they brought Santa in. The tree lighting was just packed with people. It was, it was very, the kids were very excited. I think we had more people there this year than ever, so we're fortunate here in Milltown to have so many people that turn out to help us continue all of these nice traditions. By the way, speaking of, we were talking about openings on the committees. It's not too late to get your citizen leadership application done. If you go on the borough website, you can see all the committees and subcommittees, and we'd love to hear from residents, so feel free, you know, you don't have to get to every single meeting. Some of them are on Zoom, but hopefully, if you have varied interests, there's something there that will interest you and you want to get involved in. As we heard throughout the council reports tonight, you know, I'm pleased to hear about all of the new programs, partnership, people in different departments working together, improved services, or new ways to provide services. And all that would not have happened without the work of every single council person up here and every single employee and volunteer in the borough of Milltown. So as we close our 2020, I, as mayor, show nothing but gratitude for all of your efforts and including our professionals, so we have a great team working together, and I thank you all for that. Speaking of, we're ending 2022, moving into 2023. If it's all right with the Borough Administrator, I'll say that we're going to have a new little added addition that we haven't done before, but we've been working on updating the website, and we realize that still sometimes folks are challenged to find things on the website, or some people aren't computer savvy. So thanks to Jeanette and definitely all of the department heads and employees, we're going to put together a calendar that's going to have all of the information and important dates for the borough, so a calendar will be going out. It was top of my mind because I had to write my mayor's message this morning to send over, so look for that, and, you know, so of course, I wish you all a Happy New Year. We will be back here on January 2nd for the reorg at 7:00 PM, so we'll look forward to seeing you all then. And with that, we'll move on to old business. Does any member of the council have any old business to bring before us this evening? Hearing none, I'll close old business and move on to new business. Does any member of the council have any new business this evening? Hearing none, we'll close new business and move on to audience comments. Hold on a second. I have to read my spiel. The public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to the council's attention their concerns or comments. The council will respect the public's time by refraining any comment until the speaker has finished. It should be further noted that the public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question-and-answer session. If a member of the public has specific answers, specific questions they seek answers to, an appointment can be made with the appropriate office. Please state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. Yes. Yes, Steve.
Steve Gregus, 25 Lincoln Avenue. First, I'd just like to publicly thank all the residents who came out to the celebrations this past weekend, the Christmas concert on Saturday, and the train show on Sunday. The turnout was great, and we were able to raise close to $4,000, so that was, turned out very good, so thank you, everybody who helped with that. Second off, I just want to mention that the Historic Society is going to be putting together a 100-year time capsule, and the theme is going to be current history, and we hope to tie this in with the 2025 Fourth of July celebration. That's going to be the year that we actually seal it, so we're going to give it like two years to let everybody participate in it, you know, get the schools involved, businesses. And like I said, we want to tie that in with the Fourth of July, and 2025 is going to be the year that we seal it. So I'll have more information on that as time goes, as time goes on. Next, as you know, right now, we're not allowed to open a museum because of the, because of the alarms. We need to have alarms that come down here to Borough Hall. Now, I just Now, I just found out that there was an alarm system on the museum that was disconnected some years ago because the Borough deemed it unnecessary. I have to reach out to Paul Summers of Utilities. Apparently, he knows more about this than I do. So when I find out from him if, you know, what kind of system is on there, I'll let you know. Also, I plan on going out myself. I'm going to do some homework. I'm going to reach out to some companies and see what's out there, see what prices are. When I get this information together, I'll get it back to Borough Council. Finally, one question I wanted to ask is, what are the plans with the Schwendemann cabin? If anybody can tell me what is going on with that?
I'll field it for now, as far as we have.
It goes under the Environmental Commission.
Yeah, we've been working with the Environmental Commission on this, and the initial actions to take place are going to be application of wood preservative and trying to put water between the log joists to preserve the log cabin itself. That would be phase one, as well as starting to clear the grounds. So we've obtained some quotes so far, but obviously, I think at this time, they're going to wind up needing to be revised or updated, as well as get an official report on the structural integrity, an architectural report on the cabinet itself, which is one of the reasons why we have our certified purchasing agent now moving forward with that, is that'll open some more doors and avenues for us to truly evaluate the property and then develop a step-by-step plan using the grant monies to open that up.
Okay, good. At least it's, I'm glad to see that, at least, you know, you're doing something. So that's good. Thank you very much.
So I have a question about the time capsule. When you put the new one in, what happens to the one that was buried 50 years ago? So Steve and I are class of 1975 from Joyce Kilmer School, so that would be 50 years. Wasn't there one that was buried back then?
I don't know, but I don't know. I don't know if I'm going to bury this one. I don't decide where I'm going to put this. I'm either going to store it in some building or...
Well, there was definitely one back when. I didn't know if anybody's opened it yet, or if it's going to be opened.
I don't know. That's, yeah, you've got me curious about that.
Sounds like an investigation.
But I just wanted to be neat. A 100-year one would be cool. I thought we're going to be around, but I don't know. And I'll have more information on that as time goes on.
Yes, Steve, we'll talk. I know we spoke for the train show. We'll talk more.
Thanks, Steve. Anyone else? Yes, Lee.
Good evening.
Evening. Lou Weisenberger, 99 JFK Drive, Milltown. Before I start, just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Merry Christmas and happy holidays to you.
I've been doing more research pertaining to the pond and the dam. And interestingly enough, I found a whole bunch of stuff on the Borough website. It pertains to planning board meetings and the redevelopment agency, going back in time. What's interesting about that is there's still questions by members of the planning board about the pond, who owns it, within the last two years. Like I said, going into the Borough website and poking in different phrases, because that's what you got to do. I have two documents here now, going back, and 2013 seems to be a key year. One of the requirements that was started earlier was that the pond owner be verified, because it's within 200 feet of the project, which is a normal thing. That dragged out for a little while. But Mr. Boray did a title search. The problem with the first answer to that was, it was like, all he had to do was identify the owner. It didn't say it was required to tell you who it was. There was a subsequent meeting, okay? And that comes out now because Mayor Steber was there, a couple other people. But the mention then is it's owned by the Berger family, which is kind of strange. Because I don't know how that happened either. But once again, the key to this is that Mr. Marata is our board attorney for this. I would ask you to ask him if he got a copy of this title search. That's a little fuzzy there, you know, the way they talk about it.
Can you share what you have so far? Or do you, I mean, I don't know if you have it. Well, if it's on the website, that's fine.
As I said, some of these documents are long, but I can give you the excerpt here that I copied out of this stuff.
All of your digging predates any of us sitting up here, but we'll certainly follow up.
Yeah, I can follow along here. This one's...
Ms. Councilman Potter and I are the liaison, you know, on the planning board, so we'll follow up.
Absolutely.
Because I can give you one here. This is, like I said, this one, this is a follow-up meeting. This is actually 8/27/2013. And this is Mr. Garrawati talking, and then he asked Mr. Curley, who is the attorney for Mr. Boray. And he says, "Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board will recall last month. We discussed one of the Borough's checklists, and that is the indication of the name or identification of adjacent owners. Since that time, the applicant for Ford Avenue Redevelopment has provided us with the title work on the adjacent property. Property of interest was tax block 1, tax block 8601, Mill Pond. We are in receipt of the title report, which does indicate ownership of the property. And so it's my advice to the Board that the requirement of the ordinance has been met. Application is deemed adequate," like I said. But then, we move on, and we get to the next one. Once again, this is, well, this is the previous one, actually, 7/30, which is, that's the same guy. We'll do that one back.
Did you, have you been, could you, are you available to come on a Wednesday night to a planning board meeting?
I hope I can. So that would be next week?
No.
Or that's this is...
No, it was like, it's the first Monday.
Okay, yeah. I just dug up all this stuff too, so I'm trying to catch up on all of it too.
It seems like you have more planning board than council stuff.
But this one, this one is more important. Because this is, like I said, the 8/27/2013 meeting, attended by a lot of people. It's a preliminary site plan and preliminary major subdivision thing. And a lot of people present. Once again, we'll go back in here. Come on. This is a conversation going on. And it gets into, in fact, Mike might have been at this meeting, Mr. McCollum, because they're talking about the contour of the slopes going down to the pond. And once again, this is Mr. Marata involved, and who's the first guy? Like I said, it's going back and forth, but there are some slopes in the area, and some areas the slopes are less. In general, I would suspect they would stay. Okay, because the Mill Pond, as you found out, is owned by a family, a group household, Mr. Berger's relatives. But then it goes, "And if you look at the old deed, it says you have access to the, you have access to the pond water that is back so many feet, so that they can enter the property, like over by and back of the rescue squad as well, because that is the other side, so therefore, the land can't be touched unless the property is purchased." And this goes back and forth. But what comes out of this is, once again, Mr. Steber says there's a deed in the attic in the Borough Hall to this effect. And they call it an old deed. Now, I don't know what that means. You know, that could be 25 years, 50, but apparently, there's something in the attic. Now, I don't know if anybody has contact with Mr. Steber or Mr. Januska, but you know, maybe you could send a nice letter.
It's Borough stuff.
It's Borough stuff. I agree.
It shouldn't matter who's here.
But, yeah, no, I'm just saying, hey, what's in the attic? I don't know. Because I have a question about record keeping anyway. Old meetings, you know, we have videotaped now, whatnot. I don't know the sequence going back, but are all the old records of the meetings maintained?
Does a clerk have an answer for that?
There's a record destruction process that they may have already gone through to destroy any of, you know, old meetings that were, they were able to do. So I wouldn't know that without researching it.
There's minutes available for all the meetings, correct? Not the actual, maybe not the actual tape? I don't know how far back that would go.
Because that's like with the planning board and the redevelopment agency then.
They have minutes and I don't...
Yeah, there's transcripts.
Yes.
You know, yeah, it goes back and forth. So like I said, maybe, you know, like I said, we can figure something out.
But I do know, just for record, when our previous clerk was here, she began the process of scanning in a lot of the transcripts from old meetings so that we could destroy the paper copies and then have the digital copies in. I don't know how far it went back and how far she got to the present, but I know that was one of the things that she was taking on at the time.
And along that line, Mike for CME.
Yes, sir.
How long's CME been working for the town? Best guess?
I think it was 1983.
Oh, '83? Okay. But does CME maintain all their project records?
Yes.
Okay.
Possibly. Now, we don't destroy, but we have a lot of paperless, but we need to save.
Okay. And along that line, then, once again, previously, I gave you some documents. One of those was the 45 deed, 1945, when Assault takes over the property from Mitchel Realty. I don't know if this was online at the time. This is the 1935 deed, 27 pages, from Mitchel to Mitchel Realty. And if you go through this and you get to the end, page 46, there's a big paragraph, and it talks about, it's all the lands, lands under the water, Lawrence Brook, Myers Mill Pond, Bog Brook, and all the dams. Far as I know, there's one dam in Milltown. And so it just gets passed away, passed through. Whoever bought that property owns that dam. You own a dam, you own the pond. And like I said, it's clearly explained, okay?
Thank you for doing all your homework on that.
Like I said, we're trying to get to the bottom. I think we're getting closer.
You're making progress.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Lee, January 4th, next planning meeting.
January 4th?
Yep. It's a reorg, but...
That's a reorg.
Excuse me. That would be the reorg, and they wouldn't normally do regular business at that time.
Yeah, so probably the first week, first Wednesday in February.
Yeah, because like I said, as a...
But we'll follow up.
Yeah, as a taxpayer and outsider kind of looking at this, I have concerns, you know, some, just because of the people involved, in a sense. Now, Mr. Cahill is the attorney, yet?
For Ford Avenue Redevelopment.
For Ford Avenue Redevelopment. And it's, you know, to put it kindly, like I said, they have skin in the game, kind of, because the waterway, they control the four dams. And I'm just saying that...
He's redevelop, he's the, for the age of...
I understand that, but once again, the DEP controls everything associated with the water, basically.